Ready to do anything, I'll lose it. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. We're just a few minutes late. Uh, gonna call the meeting in order. And we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please, by Ms. Kellum. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think you're muted, Nikki. Didn't hear you. Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Okay, I have a statement to read and then we'll get into public participation. Pandemic advisory to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency. This meeting is being held virtually by Communications Media Technology, CMT. I would like to remind everyone participating in all public meetings of the city to conduct themselves professionally and follow proper procedures and protocol. This includes myself as mayor and chair of the council. With council members on camera and without the normal distractions of open council chambers up close, CMT meetings create a much more intimate and personal experience for the public. We must all be mindful that negative body language contributes to the poor decorum. Let's be patient and professional while following proper decorum. For the virtual meeting to run efficiently, we shall not talk over each other. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during the meeting, during the public participation portions of the meeting, click the hand icon near the upper right-hand corner of your screen. Turn your microphone on and please be patient. Staff will unmute your microphone and inform you that you are live and ask you to start with your name and city of residence and you can then begin to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum. The council can then choose to respond to your comments or we will move on to the next commentator until all have been heard. If you clicked the hand icon accidentally, clicking again will lower your hand. Rapidly clicking multiple times to raise your hand may cause your hand icon to display properly, not display properly to staff. Staff will only be monitoring the raised hand function. The questions functions will not be monitored. Okay, uh, so we will, uh, go into public participation. For anybody that has anything that they want to address other than what's on.
All right, Mayor, uh, I do not see any raised hands at this time for public participation.
Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. How did I get muted? Must have leaned my hand on the button. I, uh, we closed public participation. We had no participants. We're gonna go into discussion. Proposed fiscal year 2020, 21 budget and five-year capital plan. Mr. Morley, are you gonna?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to thank John DeLeo and his excellent staff for putting together this budget. It's a work of art. I want to, uh, thank, send the thanks to all the department directors and their teams who helped assemble their budgets as well. I think they really done a terrific job. What I'd like to do is just start this, um, more of a dialogue discussion through the budget as we go. I'll ask Daniel to unmute John DeLeo now so he can be part of this too. And we'll start with, uh, the highlights, go through the revenues and then go through the expenses and CIPs. Unless council wants to go in any other order at all, I'll just, we'll just lead you through that direction. So, uh, to start with on page three, we're at, um, we'll start with the highlights. This is, um, uh, fiscal year 2020, 21, uh, general and library fund budgets. Um, we're proposing a mileage rate of 3.65 and .0552 mills respectively for general fund and library fund. So that's a, a total of, uh, correct me, John, 3.7570.
Seven oh two, yeah.
Which is a reduction from last year. It is not rollback. It is a reduction in the mileage rate from last year. We should start there and see if there's any questions about the mileage rate.
I have none.
Any others?
I have none.
I have none, I agree.
Mayor, Councilmember Morrison is raising his hand.
Okay. Just on the question, um, on the mileage rate, the, uh, it's 3.6. It was a half a mill. And then the, the rollback rate was, I wrote this down two times and now I can't find it. John, if you know.
Yes, 3.63, 3.6396, if everyone could hear me?
Yes. That's what it was.
Okay, that was the only clarity I need. Thank you.
And, um, that, uh, rollback, um, rate is about, if we went to rollback, it would be about approximately $84,000 less net uh, revenues in that Volarum tax. Being in the COVID-19 situation, there's a lot of uncertainty about our revenues. Um, and we thought that this particular mileage rate was reflective of the values of the community, the needs of the community and the times that we're going through. Um, if there's no other questions on the mileage rate, we can move on to employee salaries as the next, um, highlight. It includes a 3% aside for performance-based salary adjustment and a $275 employee appreciation bonus. Same as last year. There are 47 full-time positions, 6.1 part-time positions and four seasonal positions, which is almost the same as last year. Uh, we had 47 full-time, 5.1 part-time and four seasonal last year. Uh, financial stability, the unobligated general fund cash balance is forecasted to be about 3.256 million at the conclusion of this fiscal year. This is 22.9% of the 2021, uh, general fund expenditure budget. It is in excess of the 20% recommended, uh, required by the city's fiscal policy. Uh, fund by overall balance available in the prior year was 3.274 million dollars. Economic outlook you'll see on page four, um, talks about the economy. The, the economy has generally been growing. Um, of course, the COVID-19 setback has, has put a lot of folks, particularly in the service and cruise industries, out of business and, um, really lacking in revenues. And that's affected a lot of sectors, particularly in the city Cape Canaveral. Uh, I have sent some reports out about the hotel, uh, industry, for example, on how the cruise business has affected it. And they're still under the no sale order. Not exactly sure when that's going to be lifted, but there's certainly local impacts for that. Otherwise, um, the housing prices are still going strong, um, very few foreclosures. Uh, the taxable value of the city is up over last year and that's a general trend throughout the nation. Revenues, um, 19 million in general fund. We've got ad valorem taxes of 4.866. That's at the proposed mileage rate. Uh, and you see there on page six an overview of the other, uh, revenues, local, local option gas tax. I was talking with a council member earlier today that, yeah, that, that will continue to increase as we, as, have less reliance on fossil-fueled, uh, energies. And that's a good thing for our environment, I think, but it was definitely a hit there. Franchise fees at 776, uh, utility taxes at 1.1 million. Communication services tax, they've decreased a little bit over the years due to some state, um, mandates. Uh, state revenue shares at 920, 795 and it's, uh, the, uh, overall projection that John made has been pretty accurate about accrued revenues being down 50%. We're still projecting that for the short term. We don't know how long this is going to go on, but we see the accrued revenues continuing to, uh, stay at that decreased rate. They have not decreased beyond that. Um, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we've been pretty accurate on that all along with 50%.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very, it's a very good and, uh, conservative, uh, estimate. And, um, when the state closes up, the state closed out their year on June 30th. And what will happen then in August when they finally do their last amendment and they, you know, finalize their budget, then, um, they will make adjustments to state's, um, revenues accordingly. And, um, that's when we'll see, uh, the actual, uh, hit we'll take. But I could tell you that revenues are, revenues are actually holding very well. And I believe, as I was discussing with a council member today, that, um, our contingency, um, that we built into this budget could very well fend off the, the lion's share of, uh, of what we're going to incur. So that's, that's really good news, meaning that, you know, at a minimum, we would have to go into our reserves. And even then, there's, there's $250,000 in the reserves that we could take if need be, and that's what it's for. That wouldn't even affect or go below, uh, the city's policy of 20% in unobligated reserves.
And if I could, um, ask you to flip the page over to page eight, uh, we'll stop by and visit the CRA for a moment. We've got revenues there of 5.6 million, but 1.5 of that is from the TIF money. We've got 4.037 coming in from transfer from general fund. That's for the multi-generational facility, which will be under construction in this fiscal year. A brief update on the multi-gen, we've got a meeting with the, um, first choice contractor this week to go over the first round of value engineering proposals. Um, hopefully they'll be able to get to the numbers where, uh, where we're comfortable with it, uh, without sacrificing quality or any programs. But, you know, it's that time where you look at it and say, do we really need granite tops? Can we get away with Formica, that kind of a thing? Those are the discussions we're having with them now and we expect to bring, um, we're very hopeful that this will bring a contract back within the next month. So that will possibly be on the August council agenda, but more likely the September council agenda now. And that also includes the Cape Center, of course. Uh, so that's the CRA. Um, there's the enterprise funds. We've got the, on page nine, we've got wastewater and stormwater enterprise funds. Uh, you can see the revenues there, 8.7 million in wastewater and 1.1 million in stormwater. Then I'd like to take your attention over to page 11 where we have the consolidated. I'm sorry, page 15, consolidated financial overview. Um, we'll use this as our, uh, leaping off point to get into expenditures, but let's finish off the revenues. We're looking at a, uh, tallying of the revenues. And if you look all the way over to the right, you'll see we've got ad valorem taxes at 4.9 million. That represents 14.2% of the revenues. And you go down all the way through and you see how much of each one of those revenues are sourced for our, our total 100% revenue and cash forward of 100%. All those revenues are detailed in the tabs that follow. The general fund, uh, special revenue fund, enterprise funds, agency funds, we can get into more details. But this is a good place for us to stop and ask, do we have any questions on any of those revenues? Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Don't see no hands going.
Okay, and we can always bounce back if we need to. Oh, Angela, Councilmember.
Excuse me. I'm just curious, did you say that this is all down 50% because of the virus?
The, the accrued revenues are down 50%. Uh, we've been reporting on that in the monthly financials for a few months now. So there's like the state revenue share and that, that stuff, that the accrued revenues.
All right, is the projection then that everything will be down until this is over with? So it's possible that this, if this goes on for the rest of the year?
That's very possible, but again, we're talking only about a limited area of revenues. The ad valorem taxes, we're still expecting to get at the, I believe it's 95 receipt rate, 95% receipt rate, John, at 4.1.
I was looking at the, soon you'll be getting the June, um, financials. And the ad valorem, uh, has surpassed 100%. It's like at 101.4%. And that's because now we've collected, you know, the, any, the delinquent, the delinquent taxes are coming in and those types of things. So that's very good. Uh, we're, we've exceeded 100%. And Angela, in answer to your question also is that, yeah, there were estimates put in there, um, to, um, the estimates we put in there that you'll see on the sheet, we'll look at later for the, uh, uh, COVID-19 revenues and expenditure impacts. You know, we projecting 423K. Now, you may not, uh, now this thing, remember, this is, uh, of course, this is the new budget, but when you look at the other budgets, yes, like Todd says, those, those things are built in. But I could tell you that the revenues are actually coming, we're doing very well with the revenues higher than we expected. So if the state doesn't surprise us too much in August with a big, big hit, we're going to come out of this relatively strong.
John, do you have an estimate of the total annual impact of the 50% accrued revenues, uh, foregone, an estimate?
We're looking, we're looking, we think overall we can take a hit of about 423, uh, so that's overall, but, and that's when we get through, when we get through after the state does their thing in August. We'll see if those numbers all roll up like that, but it, but as you look at your monthly financials and as I'll show you, uh, later, you'll see where our financials are running relatively, uh, close to where, to where they actually should be, which means we're having a very healthy year in revenues. So even though we're taking a hit, we may have collected more earlier on, um, things of that nature. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit confusing, but you can see where in some cases the revenues that are projected are lower because we, we purposely put it in like that because we believe that's the hit we're going to take. Okay?
Are there any other questions?
But one, one thing, Angela, this will clear it up too. Community services tax, uh, the budget was 464. We're predicting 395. We think we're going to take a hit there potentially of $69,000. But we're going to have to see what the, what the state does in the end here in August. That's a good example, though, to show you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay, if there are no other questions on revenues, we can go on to expenditures. Um, if we turn page 17, I want to stop by the, uh, the schedule. We are in the July-August timeframe with city council involvement. If you flip to page 19, our next meeting on this will be on 8/4, or that's what we do to the property browser. Next meeting will be our budget workshop, uh, if necessary, on August 18th. So continuing to flip through, uh, into the general fund, beginning on page 25, we've got some, uh, budget detail expenses. Um, and we're starting to go through the departments and the funds here. So, uh, rather than go through each one, um, I know that John and I had the, the privilege of talking to each council member one-on-one and answering a number of questions in these expense details. Um, let's, rather than going through each one, I would like to start with, are there any questions that council members have on any of the expenses in these pages? John, is there, John, is there anything you want to touch on in the expenses?
No, no, just when we look at revenues, it's good to know, you know, we're gonna, it's always good that, you never know if we're going to repeat what's going to happen this year, what next year, you know, with COVID or whatever. But leisure services, I mean, you know, they potentially in their revenues, you look at what the revenues are, they potentially could take a, you know, $60 or 60,000, $60,000, uh, hit. Because if none of the programs are happening, if you just do the math with, you know, the daycare and, uh, the Friday fest and the rentals and everything else, just you could, you could, you could do that math on your own. You know, geez, if, if we don't open up, uh, you know, leisure services isn't open up completely, I mean, that's, that's a big, that's a big hit there. That's about all I got for you.
John, can we talk, can you talk briefly about our total debt service? Total debt and how we're doing on that, how, how soon it will be paid off? Part of what we're doing now is going into a phase where we're not taking on any new debt. Obviously, we will have to take on some smart debt like we did the SRF money. But as far as capital expansion projects, we're, we're kind of retracting on that right now and focusing on the payment of debt. John, can you overview the, uh, total debt service for us?
Yeah, I'll, and, and, and the easiest terms is, is that we've got about $20 million of debt left. Our annual, um, debt ratio is below 9%, which is outstanding for any city. And backed by our auditor's, uh, support of, of that, they, they would tell you when they look at our city, you know, they just smile compared to, to other cities. Um, we have that capital note for 2014 that we used to build the, uh, city hall and the fire, um, the fire, uh, station. That's going to be paid off in 2024. That'll put $315,000 more back into enterprise funds, over $300,000 more back in the general fund. Um, all our SRF loans, um, you know, they're at virtually zero interest. And some of them have been paid down, you know, six or seven years, others, you know, um, have another 12 years or so. Uh, we're easily, we're, we're easily making our payments. Um, we're, we're better than to cover these debts. We're better than 1.5. We're like at 2.92, which means that, that means we're very healthy. You know, normally when you have debt like this, you want to have, you know, one and a half times the revenues, you need a pledged revenues to cover these things. And we're like at 2.92. So it just gives you, uh, that's just an overview of, um, you know, uh, how healthy we are. Um, and, and these, these major programs being SRF-funded, like the SCADA, SCADA system and, uh, a few others, uh, the affluent, there are two big, our two big programs out in, um, wastewater. They're SRF-funded. Um, it's, uh, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty healthy there. So uh, that gives you an indication of our debt. Our debt's really in, really good shape.
Uh, can, John, can we go over to, uh, fire rescue services? I want to make sure that we, um, answer any questions because I know Dave Sergeant had proposed some increases in personnel expenses there. I want to make sure we're capturing that there. I'm on page 37.
Yeah, this was for, uh, fire rescue, yeah. Uh, nothing, oh, go ahead, Todd.
Does that figure 1.878473 cover all of those new expenses that, uh, we talked about maybe four or five months ago?
Uh, yes, that includes the, um, you know, and if they're able to do it, it's going to be based on the COVID, whole COVID thing, you know, with there being, um, the less traffic there, they, um, they pulled the, uh, you know, they pulled that, uh, position that was going to cost us 78K this year. So, um, that didn't happen. But those nine positions that they added, uh, those nine, I believe they're like part-time positions or three shifts or whatever.
Three per shift, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's figured in there. And, um, so that's where we're at right now. So, I mean, it's not significant at all. It's a 2%, 2% increase. And, um, so there's nothing, you know, if you, if you look back, it's, that's not much different than what's happened even in the past, based on, um, you know, their total contract, what they charge the city.
And I don't know if Chief Sergeant is on right now. Perhaps you could answer the question, but, uh, where do we stand on the port's commitment to 50% fund that? Do we have an answer on that?
So, uh, that does not include the nine personnel.
That doesn't include the nine?
No, John, you, you, you readjusted that, uh, because we reapplied for the grant.
Oh, okay. And we wouldn't find that out, Dave, till, like, September?
Yes, then.
Okay.
And it could even be later. And at that time, then we will come back to the city.
Okay.
For the matching funds if we get it. If not, we are holding off till the following year, uh, to fund those additional personnel.
All right. Thanks for that clarification, Dave, because I know that grant, it was, you know, it, once, once we were getting the grant and we weren't getting the grant. But, um, that, that's fine. And, and the thing about it is, is, um, we'll, you know, we'll have to, if that was to happen during the year, we'll have the contingency money to, um, to cover that.
Dave, thank you for.
Terrible COVID year.
We wanted to make sure we, thank you, Dave. I appreciate your clarity on that.
All right.
All right. Uh, are there any questions on that or any other item, um, so far in expenditures? Okay, seeing none, um, we can move on through, uh, expenses if there's no others. We can talk about the agency funds, the enterprise funds, um, which are very healthy right now. A portion of the enterprise funds will be used to fund, uh, some of the, uh, capital improvement, the, um, the multi-gen and the Cape Center as, as applicable. And then we move on to, I'm on page 81 now. If we're through with those expenditures, we can talk about page 81, which is the org chart, uh, as proposed. Um, very pleased with this organizational chart and particularly in the area of public work services. Um, Jim has done a terrific job with that team out there. Uh, they saved us a, a good deal of money throughout the year by, uh, having talented staff in-house taking care of a lot of traditional things for public work services departments to do. So my hats off to, to Jim and his team for doing a great job out there. But we feel this realignment of public works is more true to the, the traditional values of a public works department. Uh, are there any questions at all on the organizational chart on page 81? All right, seeing, um, we can move on to the capital improvement plans. Uh, capital improvement plans start on page 93 and they take up the, the rest of the budget. There's a lot of detail there. Basically, these roll forward year to year over a five-year horizon. John, point out anything for me that stands out as new, added to the 2021 budget, because I don't recall anything.
I think what I like to point out here is that, um, you know, the, the projects that, um, you know, carry considerable, the, the high-dollar projects, um, um, for instance, leisure services, Six Veterans Memorial Park, the, uh, uh, design and planning for that at 90K. That's something that was, uh, actually presented at the strategic planning back in 1718. Of course, things got in the way and that, that was, you know, put, um, moved out a bit, uh, but that was, um, you know, in our scope, that 90,000 there. And then the other thing was the, um, the only other big one in the, um, general fund is Long Point Estuary Project. And the thing to remember with Long Point, it's 640K. And I, I think, uh, kudos to Jeff and a few others who done a remarkable job with this, but, you know, half of that's going to be grant-funded. And if, so, um, if we get the grant, then obviously this is something that's a go. If we don't get the grant, well, I think Jeff could talk a little bit more to that, but then that could actually, um, that could actually stall the project because, um, the city was going to fund half of that and then, of course, half by grant. So that's still, um, I don't know if Jeff's, if Jeff's out there, when, if we were to get the grant, when that might happen? Is Jeff out there?
I do not see Mr. Ratliff in the attendee list at this moment. No, sir.
Okay, that's fine, but, but we expect that. There's a good chance of that happening. Um, and if it happens within next year, then, you know, that's going to be great because we could easily then, um, go forward and handle our share of the cost for the, um, for the Long, Long Point Estuary. Um, moving forward, the, um, the CRA, the two big hitters there, the multi-generational center and West Central and Thuram. And we're funded to, um, to do, to do those, uh, will, the CRA will cover both those projects. We have, we also have, uh, impact fees coming, uh, for West Central and Thuram. That's going to help cover those items. So they're the two biggies in the CRA. And then when you get to the, then when you get to wastewater, which is very good, is the, uh, SCADA system on page 143. Um, it's SRF-funded. It's 900K. This is something that's, we've been wanting to do. It's been on our, it's been constantly on our, our, uh, CIP plan for the last so many years. the last so many years, and we're finally there. And um, this should be a big, big year when it comes to to that. And the only other heavy hitter in the wastewater, and that's us, SRF-funded, is page one forty eight, one point nine million, and that's the um affluent disk filters and affluent drum filters. On page one forty eight. Stormwater, not much activity in stormwater, except for the Center Street Wet Pond is projected. That's four hundred K. That's, you you could see that on um, on the summary on one fifty seven. And you could read more about that on SW seven on page one sixty one, one sixty one. And um, that's the biggest, that's the biggest project uh in the upcoming years, the Center Street uh wet pond, if if that's realized. Um, but as you can see, since I've been here, this is kind of almost the lightest, you know, I know we're building two, two, have two big construction projects, but this is one of the lightest years I've seen uh in our capital improvement plan since I've been here.
Thank you for going over all those uh heavy items there, John. I also wanted to point out a couple other things. Um, and I was talking to a council member earlier today about the vehicle replacements. Um, we're going, we're encouraging as much hybrid or electric vehicle replacements as possible going into the future. Obviously, some of the the heavier duty um items, the technology isn't there yet. But where possible, we want to invest in those electric vehicles and expand our electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. I also wanted to point out um, on page one oh eight, we've got a continued focus on uh mobility plan at seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Um, John, how are we tracking on that this year uh as compared to other years? Are we um, are we hitting that number or exceeding that number?
Um, you know, uh, we're, I have, I have to look, but we're, we're, we usually, we usually consume all that for the, you know, whether it be for, you know, sidewalks or paving or or uh what have you. Um, and um, but we're on track, like, for instance, in the, in the CRA where we, we had to do um, it's uh Pierce Avenue or what have you. I think uh that's, that's run up over about, maybe about seventy-nine, eighty thousand. But we have, we had a hundred fifteen thousand in the CRA, I believe, uh, this year to cover that. And then.
And that on Ridgewood Avenue, we did some public safety improvements to the ADA mats out there that came out of the mobility as well.
Right. And I just want to, since this has to do with mobility, I'm just commenting on the the CRA that will consistently, and 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 we've talked to one council person about this that uh, and they had concerns about this. There's sixty-five thousand dollars um specifically for sidewalks in the CRA. And after the following year, not not, not next year, but two years from now, there will be eighty thousand dollars in each year in the CRA for um sidewalks and mobility.
Right. So those are ongoing projects that we we funded for quite some time, that are very important to the community. That's the rubber hits the road kind of projects, very important stuff. Um, we have a replacement of solar lights on page one twelve uh funded. Um, there are a number of solar lights that we have throughout the city. Some of them, you know, they're aging and some of them go bad. Some of them get damaged by vehicles. And as we're replacing them, we're replacing with smarter technology. They're also less expensive. You might notice a slight change in how they look, but there's no sense in going back with old technology just to keep the look the same. Um, but they're still beautiful, still the same color, smaller solar arrays, and we'll continue expanding our solar light uh uh street lighting where possible. I think those are most of the important things that we wanted to hit on going through the CIPs. Are there any other general questions the council has on CIPs or anything in the budget in general?
Wes, who's Barson?
I've got, I've got questions, but I wanted you to be able to get through that. That was really the first time we all got to hear it. Thank you. But while you're on the solar pump in there for that one, the twelfth, I'm on page one hundred twelve, um, in the CIP. The twelve thousand six hundred fifty dollars or roughly thirteen thousand a year, how many? It says five replacement solar lights. So every year we'll get five new ones. Is that how that works?
John, you want to take?
That's not every, is Jim, uh, is Jim or Tim um out there to chime in on this? Jim? Jim? No. Okay, yeah, Wes, that's, that's how they planned it out, yeah.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, okay, because there's five down there. I just didn't know if it was five per year or five each year, meaning there's twenty-five lights down there total. Um, the reason I ask is live on Ridgewood and I've, my complaints on this have went back for afar. I'm not aware of ever having a night on Ridgewood Avenue where all of the solar lights worked. And I don't like that, because, you know, I'm in the solar industry. When I see that, you know, some people go, oh, yeah, solar doesn't work, but we got these, gosh, I want to say back in twenty ten, right after, I guess Bennett was leaving. And there's, the issues working through it with Josh, and they were going out, but I'm happy to hear we're gonna get new lights, um, new technology. But just the other night, I I drove, I started down at Central Avenue and went all the way to Johnson, just the Ridgewood stretch, and counted out five lights that were out. And so when I see this stretched out, and actually, I think it was five not working, two flickering, so we had seven. And you don't know this unless you drive around here at nighttime. Um, and so I encourage Jim or you or someone to go drive down Ridgewood at night, let the sun set, because you'll see what I'm talking about. I've got video of it. Um, and I'd like to see, um, if it is five lights, that's great, but just trying to, it might be, if it's just one in here, might need to be a higher priority.
Councilmember Morrison, I just got confirmation that it is five per year until the. Are there any other?
I had, I went down west uh probably four days ago, three, Monday, I think it was of last week or Wednesday, I forget, but it was right in the middle, right, last week? I counted fourteen of them out at five o'clock in the morning. Uh, I was wondering, are we gonna repair the ones that are out, or are we just gonna replace five and let them go down?
Hey.
I mean, that, somebody can go down and count again, but I counted fourteen all the way from Central to Johnson Avenue. There's like three and four out in a row some places, just one right after the other. So, uh, you know, I know they were faulty when we first got them also, but they seem to be a time period at where we didn't have too many go down, but now all of a sudden, we got a lot going down again.
But. Mayor, I'm gonna have to get back to you uh on an answer with that.
Okay, um, Mayor Proton, I see your hand.
Right, um, I concur with both of you. Um, is there any way that we can, I know the budget says twelve, six, you know, twelve thousand six hundred and fifty, but um, I don't think it goes far enough as far as these lights. I too, um, am on Ridgewood also, and every time I'm down there, we have lights out, so maybe instead of five replacements, we need to see about getting more than five. I don't know what the board is allowed to do that, but that's, that needs to be addressed.
Mike, we could, Mike, we could easily, we could fund, we could fund that, but I think what we want, uh, like Todd was saying, I like a discussion with the Public Works Director and get a thorough, thorough briefing on this and deliver that message to all council. I think we need to do that.
Yep. Obviously, it's important that we have functioning streetlights, so we will come back with a a responsive answer to that question that will accomplish your goal.
Okay, thank you.
Which would, Mike, which would also mean that uh to to get you all um an answer on that, and then we could uh accordingly adjust the budget. Okay, uh, that item in the budget accordingly, okay? Whether it's, so if you want ten lights every year, whatever, uh, we could put that in there.
Okay. Nikki, have your hand up?
Yes, I just, I have a question, uh, just to clarify. The um, on page uh one oh eight, the mobility plan, the seventy-five thousand is sidewalks are included in that seventy-five thousand? Is that right?
Correct. And this is just a portion of the mobility plan. The other portion is the CRA-funded portion of the mobility plan.
Okay, so, um, John was saying that the the part of Pierce that got done ran over the seventy-five thousand?
No, no, we had a hundred, we had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for that.
Oh, okay.
We didn't run over, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's what I wanted to.
Yeah, we were combining this general fund and the the uh CRA funding for mobility to pay for that.
Okay, so with the, we'll, we'll, for next year, where are we gonna start? Because we had talked about, Todd, starting at one street and doing a street, like a complete street every year. Um, so the CRA money and this money will cover that. Is that right?
Yeah, but there's a, I think what you're referring to is a a broader neighborhood plan that we talked about, and unfortunately, we weren't able to bring to a strategic planning retreat this year, which we definitely plan to bring back for next year. But it's more than sidewalks, uh, that plan. And yes, it would be, that plan would attack it one street at a time. Um, for now, we're just gonna continue doing the mobility on uh on sidewalks on more of a, more or less a triage basis, that where the greater need is, where there's more gaps in the sidewalks, where people actually use and want to have the sidewalks. That's where we're gonna be spending this money for this uh beginning in this next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
True thing. Mayor, are there other questions?
Not that I know. I don't see any hands. I don't have anything.
Oh, a council member, Raymond, has her.
Okay, Mr. Raymond.
I'd like to point out to the public that this year there will not be a Florida League of Cities. So four or five council members will not be using any money for the training there and the hotels, whatever. So I just want to point that out. That's quite a bit of money, and uh we are not going this year. Plus the fact that since April, there have been no dinners at Space Coast League of Cities. We have had webinars. And that is also money that has been saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd just like, as we're rolling up this discussion on the budget, um, very timely, I might add, five forty-five. Uh, we will be revisiting the tentative proposed mileage rate and the consent agenda starting at six o'clock. Um, and then uh we we can answer any of the questions of the budget that might come up and uh let us know if we need to schedule any other workshop meetings. But if there's no other questions on the budget and the the five-year CIP, we can close that discussion and move on to the current monthly financials as we had scheduled to do so.
Right. I was just gonna say, that's what we got next. So I don't, I don't know if anybody else, anybody have anything else they want to discuss on the budget items?
No, I've got some more questions, but we're out of time. So can we um make that meeting coming up on July or um August eighth? Um, should we vote on having that meeting? It says if needed. I do, I would like to to meet then. Um, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Council?
I would like to meet again, too.
Okay. Nikki, um, Mayor, Proton, how about you? You're muted.
I have no, I have no issues with meeting, obviously.
Okay, okay.
Actually, excuse me, council, it's August eighteenth, not August eighth.
August eighteen, at five o'clock, or, well, let's get through it first. Mickey, pardon me, Angela, do you want to meet?
Uh, I've had all my questions answered. I'm okay. The only comment that I have is I have talked about several budget items that were in this budget that have already been removed, I understand. So I just want to make sure that all the council members understand the items that have been removed because they are no longer being considered. Thank you.
But we're talking about a meeting August eighteenth.
Yes, I know. I said no to that. I've had my questions answered, but then I had that other question.
Okay, we're just getting a consensus for a meeting day. Okay, would that be at six o'clock?
Uh, we would do.
Or five o'clock?
With a five. Sorry, go ahead, John.
One at a time.
It's on page nine, it's on page nineteen in your budget book, and it says if it's necessary, August eighteenth, starting at four P M.
Four P M. Everybody agreeable with that? Okay. Mickey, you're shaking your, I mean, Angela, you're shaking your head, no.
I said I didn't need a meeting. You asked that, and I said I was okay. I didn't need another meeting. I'm fine. It's all my questions being answered.
What I'm asking you now is four o'clock okay for you? Would, if we have a meeting? We're gonna have a meeting.
On August, we're having a meeting. You said, okay. What's wrong with five o'clock, right the hour before?
I don't know.
Isn't that the night of our council meeting?
We have to, uh, excuse me, mayor, but we do have a schedule um that you guys, um.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
I know, we got our schedule already set. We've set it. But uh, at four o'clock on August eighteenth is when it is. So as far as we're concerned, we will have a meeting with uh on August the eighteenth. Mr. Morrison, if you so desire, you can move on that and we'll vote it on it.
I move. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move that we have the budget workshop meeting on August eighteenth, starting at four o'clock P M.
Second, and we'll go. Okay, just call the roll on it, please, Mayor, and then we'll make it official. We know it's there, but let everybody know.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Keller?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, August eighteenth, four o'clock, uh, workshop for the budget. Okay, we'll go into our monthly financials.
John, you want to go ahead and lead us through that?
Sure, um, I have the May financials in front of me. Just, just an overview. I I think I just need to talk for just very, very few, just a couple minutes. Um, you know, the budget, we should be year-to-date at about sixty-six point seven percent. Um, that that's what the total annual budget would be supposedly, the way we do it, consumed at. And our our departmental costs are only at forty-six point six percent. We're running under. There's um, at this point, at the end of May, we've only used three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for uh uh architectural design and what have you, uh, other expenses for the CRA well below, which means that there's a lot that's gonna be carried forward into the next year because we're just, we're just in the negotiations with the the builder. Um, in terms of our uh, our investments, our investments have really, have been really good, really uh good because we we've we're, we've made more, more money in interest. For instance, uh, if you turn to page one of six, you know, we've realized a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars already, and we only had sixty-three thousand in the budget. And that was because interest rates were very bad of, you know, two years ago, year and a half ago, whatever. But because the interest rates have been so good, I mean, we're two hundred and two percent right now, so that's, that's a good positive. Um, and uh, going down to the expenditures, uh, we have four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in contingency. Uh, and of course, we're bracing for, you know, the hit we might take from the the state. Moving forward uh to the wastewater fund, um, we're sitting good there. We've only, our expenses are only thirty-nine, thirty-nine uh point seven percent uh of the, you know, we should be at about sixty-six percent, but of course, projects run differently. Uh, but our utility operating income looks great at two point five million. And on the stormwater side, our stormwater utility uh revenues look great, six hundred and nine thousand. And again, in stormwater, stormwater's looking really healthy. It's got a hundred fifty thousand dollars in contingency, and we're only at a spend rate of thirty-three point two. and we're only at a spend rate of thirty-three point two percent. Um, and our overall, um, like I said, our overall investments, total SPA and Florida Safe Investments um, are at eleven million. And dissect out of that, uh, right now for the Cape Center and the um, multi-generational center, we have six point three million dollars in investments just sitting there, ready to go when we decide to build and start paying the bills. That's all I got. So we're looking really good and I can tell you a quick look at some of the items because it wasn't completely done for June, the numbers look even better. That's all I got.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Mr. Morley, did you want to wrap it up? Nobody has any questions. We can go to discussion outside if we need to.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you um, to John and for doing this. You know, back when we called this meeting, didn't realize it was going to roll into the budget today. So we've all, we're all deep into that, but um, hopefully it's not as scary as we thought it was with COVID, uh, financial impacts. Um, so I believe, you know, we can do it and get through this and come out looking better. Thank you.
I think we have a healthy cushion. Uh, Mr. Morley? You there?
I think we lost him, Bob.
I'm sorry about that. I was muted.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I just wanted, if you wanted to wrap it up and we needed any public participation, if we had any.
Um, Mia, is there a requirement for public participation at this point?
I don't think there's a requirement, but you can always ask the public to weigh in if you want.
So if anybody, no, I just want to know if anybody had any, give everybody an opportunity to say their ten cents worth or whatever.
Daniel, do you have anyone?
No, sir, no raised hands at this time.
So Mayor, what I would request is that we keep the webinar open for a regular city council meeting at six o'clock, which is about five minutes from now. And if we could each uh, mute our microphones and turn off our cameras and then we'll just leave the webinar open and we'll all come back and reconvene at six o'clock sharp.
No problem. Angela, do you have a question? You raised your hand. Can't hear you.
She was muting herself.
Sounds good. So do we need to adjourn here?
It, it would be appropriate to adjourn, Mayor. Well, you're muted, Mayor.
We're going to take a break and uh, be back at six o'clock.
And we're adjourning this meeting.
Adjourn.
Thank you.